I would like to call meeting. I'm Jane Burke, Chair of the Committee. First time I've mentioned who I am. I would like to call meeting 1,629th order at 6:05, I believe it is. And having a forum, we may continue. I would like to change the order of business in order to allow for Whitney and Mark Saunders to be heard earlier in the evening. It's their parents and I would think they need to get home. So with your approval, I would like to take that first. Can I have a?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have to do a roll call vote because we have some virtual folks here. I don't see Jeff up there yet, do I?
No, he said he might be late. He's going to come in virtually.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so Cara, okay with you?
Great with me.
All right, Danell?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes, that's the chair.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Jane?
But I can see it.
Okay, so now we are going to item 13A. Vote on whether Whitney and Mark Saunders can have, who live in Sheffield, would like their child to go to New Marlborough. All right. Is there a question needed?
Well, Charles was going to talk, but I didn't let him go.
I would love to have whoever wants to speak.
Yeah. Great. And Dennis for sure.
Okay.
All right, great. So just for a little context, Mark and Whitney, who are sitting behind me, are parents of two daughters, one of whom was originally scheduled to enroll in our EK class for the school year at South Egmont. However, we changed to just K. And so they missed that cutoff. And so then I was happy to tell them that the following year, they could enroll at South Egmont in kindergarten. And then, of course, they got our email to find out that we were not running a kindergarten program in, at South Egmont next year. However, they remained applicable and amenable to looking at other options. And they were able to visit the Marlboro Central. And their older daughter Molly is enrolled for kindergarten at the Marlboro Central. And then, just for family planning, they were interested in Sally, their younger daughter, also enrolling. And because we don't officially have school choice for pre-K, we have to come up to the school committee to ask for an exception we granted so that they can enroll both children in the same room. And we do have this space as of now, but they understand it's contingent on all the Marlboro and moderate families who are in first. However, I just wanted to ensure that because I'm always interested in keeping families together that are invested, that we come to you and seek that.
So I'll take a motion to approve.
I haven't seen that.
What?
I have motion to approve the.
Molly and Sally.
Sally, Sally, Sally to enroll in Marlboro.
Second. Second, okay, so I'll take a roll call vote. Cara?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Discussion.
Why, no, I'm sorry, I'm all for this. I just want to understand why it is considered choice? Is it because they're in a different town?
You have a policy. We have a policy with residents.
Okay.
Go to what school is their first choice?
Okay.
Cool.
Yeah. Now, we can keep going.
Yeah, well, it's good that we know what the rules are.
Yeah.
That this is the way we learn.
Okay.
All right, so we have Cara.
Yes, for me.
And do you know enough of what's going on?
I think we just have her abstaining. She didn't hear.
I didn't hear. What are we voting on?
Okay, so we can have, we're just.
Yes, you'll like it. I vote yes.
Art?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jane? All right.
Yes, Jane, you're gonna like it.
Oh, I definitely wanted to vote yes.
Thanks for having me.
Welcome.
Appreciate it. Thanks so much.
All right, now we're going back to something less entertaining, which are the approval.
The door's a lot.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be inhospitable.
That's not very nice here.
The minutes of meetings, 1,628. Does anybody make a motion to accept?
Can somebody pass my folder then?
Yeah. I have a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept.
Laura?
Second.
Okay, Laura, and then Danell? And does anybody have any corrections? I don't see any hands up, so we'll go for a vote. I'm always gonna call on you first, Cara, for now.
Okay, well, I say yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
That's her phone.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
The minutes are approved. The enrollment numbers are on here. And if there's anybody that has any questions about that, please correct them. That's not, thank you very much for them.
We're at 6:31. It's on TV. We're fairly consistent. Yeah. For 6:1.
All right, so now miscellaneous correspondence, there is none. We have finished item two. We have misnumbered here, so we're actually on like item three.
That's gonna be very exciting. You're welcome.
Yeah. All right, just for, just change all the numbers I go there.
Okay.
And the student, is there a student representative here? Hard to tell.
Jeff needs to come in. Julie?
Does anybody know if any of these others from the public are students? If any of you are student representative, would you please raise your hand? I guess everybody's too busy with.
There's a lot happening today.
There's a lot. I don't, so I'm going to pass over that. And then we are going to go to the student spotlight number four. And Stephanie Graham is here to tell us something, one of the things that students have been doing related to the exhibition that we have around us in the library right now. Thank you very much, Stephanie, for making time for this.
Yes, it's my pleasure. Can you hear me okay there?
Yes.
Good. So, yeah, the exhibit behind you was something that we put together last year at the Sheffield Historical Society. Now it's a traveling exhibit. And it's been to maybe six schools all year. And it ended up at Mount Everett last, kind of by design, because we've been planning to continue that program or, you know, make that program evolve to make it reach more students. And we were able to do that this year through a Stars residency grant, thanks to the Mass Cultural Council. So basically, last week, it concluded. And what it was, was a residency with Sean Stevens, who's a member of the Stockbridge Muncie community, and with Paul O'Brien, the president of the Sheffield Historical Society. And it was a week-long program where middle school students learned some traditional teachings and practices, and then went over to the Historical Society every day and built a wigwam, which is there right now. It's standing, and it'll be there as long as it lasts through the elements. So, and I do have a message from Paul from the Historical Society. He welcomes all of you to come visit it. It's, it's meant to be another teaching element to tell the history of the town of Sheffield and the surrounding areas, giving, giving to the indigenous population of our land. But the students that participated, I'm very proud of because they committed to the entire week after school every day and all weekend long this weekend. And it wasn't easy. It was a difficult task. They were so energetic and positive and all good stuff. I just couldn't be more happy and proud of them. They are Leo Valesquez, Sophie Del Mosto, Isabella Pollack, Lindsay Markham, Bear Donovan, Camila Rodriguez, Joey Graham, and Sayana Wyler. Questions? But, yeah, they did such a wonderful job. I'm happy to also show some. I don't know if that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. If you want to show them.
Sure. Um, all right, let me see if this works here. Oh, I have, I'd have to share my screen.
Make her come in.
So, yeah, you make her present her. I'm just gonna find her a little doodad now that she's large. Just going to the participants.
Just let me know when I'm good to go.
You're good to go, Steph.
All right, take it away.
All right.
Now what she's saying.
Technology being good to watch.
All right, are you able to see my screen?
As we are, beautiful.
Perfect. Okay, so we started the week with Sean doing a whole school presentation. I wanted to really reach all students six through 12 in as many ways as possible because I knew that there was such a gap in this local, you know, place-based learning that they, they don't, that they missed. Then our small group had met, would meet in the library for a few days before we headed over to the Sheffield Historical Society. And this was to sort of get them in the mindset of what they were doing. Here, we were creating a medicine pouch and looking at some of the exhibit panels and learning the history and, you know, also building our little community. We created a little culture within our group. It was really sweet. This was an example of one of our small or smaller, smaller group facilitated discussions that Sean had with high school students in the library. We were able to answer questions. It was like a Q and A. It was great. And here we are, building the frame of the wigwam. It was, it was from start to finish, basically, they did everything. They peeled bark, they organized all the saplings and the poles. They tied them all together. They dug the holes. It was, it was full on. And here's the group minus Sayana. She wasn't in this picture, but this is in front of the wigwam. And Sean's in this picture as well. And here's the final product. It stands right next to the law office in the backyard of the Historical Society. So it's, it's a cool sort of, you know, juxtaposition between colonial settlement and traditional culture. So we're really happy and proud of it.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
We have a question or a comment from Bonnie.
Stephanie, I want to thank, on behalf of Sheffield and Liz Stark, this is, I want to thank you so much because it's really enriched the whole exhibit. People are talking about it. It's coming out in all of our notices. And, you know, it's a whole idea that history is alive and the fact that our students were so integral in making it happen. Really, thank you.
Thanks for saying that. My pleasure.
Thank you very, very much. I want to go down and see.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you again. Stephanie, would you tell the students that we really enjoyed seeing the fruits of their labor and appreciate their involvement?
I will do, I will do that. Thank you.
All right. Now we have public comment time. Would you like to buy? And I'll be looking for hands up for those participants who are not school committee members. I don't see any hands going up. So I'm assuming that there are no questions for statements from the public. Thank you for attending and following along with our progress. And we will go on to. Can you say something?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge Liz O'Donnell for attending pretty much every meeting for at least the past year.
Yeah.
I think that's a huge ask from a teacher. And Liz, I think you're just the best for doing that.
Well, I think it makes a big difference to the teacher community and the community of Marlboro to know that there's somebody who is paying attention on every app. So I think it's great.
Thank you. I feel very informed because I do come to these meetings and I take notes.
Yeah.
Fine. This, I'm speaking now is public.
Yeah.
I just want to acknowledge, we just had the most beautiful honor and awards gathering outside. And Jesse and his team have to be thanked. That was just absolutely wonderful. And he even addressed the idea that there are people sitting there who've been part of our community since they were six months old. Now they're graduating. And it was, Art was there, oh, Dennis was sitting right there. It was just such a wonderful feeling about what we're really about. And Jesse even noted how important the special nature of our community. And the parents were just coming up and thrilled. And thank you, Jesse, for putting, and your team.
I appreciate that. I'm sure.
You're welcome.
Some of us were very sorry to miss it.
I did, I did acknowledge that. Other things going on tonight, some of you were not able to attend.
And I decided to be delinquent.
No, well, thank you. That's great. We needed your representation.
Yes.
All right, now we are on item six, the business manager's report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I have just one item for you tonight. It's the warrant report. We have only four or five warrants, excuse me, to, to review tonight. Really, all of them, I mean, there's the $5,000 vendor warrant. That was a prom deposit. That's a little bit unusual. And the real unusual one is the health insurance warrant because it's only $53,000 instead of the roughly $200,000 that we normally see. That is basically because it's, it's just the retired employees' insurance. The regular insurance, we had a premium holiday, which we knew was coming and budgeted accordingly. But that, that was enacted in the month of June payment. So, you know, we had less to pay. We'll have the same holiday next year, and that's in the budget as well. The rest of the items on here, you know, the other vendor warrant of $132,000, I reviewed it. It's, it's really all just your typical bills, nothing, you know, highly unusual there. The electric bill, some sped tuition, some food for the lunch program. The P card warrant, again, it's $2,700. And it's, it's basically just made up of, you know, things that people needed immediately and use the P card to purchase them with. So, you know, maintenance supplies, items like that. And that's basically it, really, unfortunately, or I guess fortunately, depending on the way you look at it, not much excitement in the warrant report tonight.
We don't, we don't need excitement.
That's often the case, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll take a motion to, well, first of all, yeah, let's have a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the warrant report.
Thank you, Dennis.
Second.
Second from Art. And then, can anybody want any further discussion on it? I don't see any hands up, so we will take a roll call vote. I'll go first to the virtual folks. Cara?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Bonnie?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Nancy? Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jane? Yes. Okay. Now we are going to the business of the district member towns. That's number seven. I'm going to open that up to any planning board members who would like to comment on any work that they have done since our last meeting with the planning board. Bonnie, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I really think it is absolutely critical that we do whatever we can to get this notice out so that people are on, on the 20th and the 30th, that they register ahead of time. It's a community talk. It's totally virtual. All you have to do is register. I know that a number of us have been hearing so much lack of information in our communities, and lack of information and misinformation. And as I've said before, I'm particularly concerned by people who are usually very, very well-informed individuals who are drawing blanks when it comes to this. So I think it's really incumbent upon us in any way we can, whether we're, you know, on Instagram, Facebook, our circles, get people involved. It's critical. And, and it's, there is a lot that's moving ahead, and we don't benefit from not having a well-informed.
Any other members here? Danell? You don't have to say anything. I just want to make sure that you have.
Yeah. I'd like to just add on to what Bonnie said. I haven't come back for very long, but I already probably have three meetings with, with people from my time. But basically, they don't have a clue at school.
Yeah, well, I wanted to speak to that point because I've made it very public to the planning board that I personally don't endorse large Zoom meetings for interactions with my community. And I would like to put it out to our committee, if you're interested in hosting in your own towns or as a school committee, other in-person or small group discussions where people who may not feel comfortable on large Zooms or need one-on-one conversations for us to go into action, not to promote any particular opinions, but to make the kind of connection that I hope we had made two years ago. Because I had envisioned this as an opportunity to talk about education with our constituents and what it means to us and what it means to them and what their expectations are, and that we would all learn together about what was the best solution, rather than going with a preferred model that people have to try to understand. And I think there's nothing that prevents us if we, as a body, feel we would like to do anything. I think as individual members of the committee, we do represent our people. And I, I don't see any reason why we can't go to our own select boards and to our own finance committee meetings, our own churches, our own PTAs, all these things, and have these conversations on people that people face. So I'd like some feedback on, on that. Dennis?
Well, just kind of expanding a little bit. I mean, the best example of that, of these three people that I have talked to since I got back in town, they don't even understand the process.
Yeah.
And even to the point of, of two of the three didn't even understand that their voice was a voice in the process.
Well, I can.
I mean, that, that's how far out in the dark everybody is.
So Dennis, building on that, what would your, how would you like to go about changing that?
What I suggest we do is, is that it'd be good for, say, representatives from the school committee or somebody from the school committee to go to each of the town officials and basically say, we'd like a spot on your, you know, one of your town leaders, you know, or one of your select wardens, just to kind of lay out what actually is or may or may not happen.
Well, I know.
A little education.
Yeah. Right now, it's planned from the planning board that Lucy and Jade are going to go to every select board via Zoom, I believe. They didn't think that most select boards were meeting in person, but they said they were. And they were going to tell them what was going on. The question is, do we want to have an opportunity to speak to them as well?
I've already spoken to our select board.
Yeah.
Egmont has it once a month. You know, and actually, you know, a very nice letter. Thank you for sending. Yeah, I, I think I could characterize the, the person select board as being pretty skeptical.
Well, not necessarily to take their temperature, but at least to have.
They understand, I think that. I think they have an understanding.
Yeah.
The process, you know, yeah.
Chair of the.
Yeah.
Operations. Um, yeah, I think that they understand, maybe taking it a step further to try to get them to somehow gather the community members and educate that, inform them on that. Yeah, I feel, I know where they stand too. But it would be nice to, how we would go about, because I know at our select board meetings, in our monthly meetings, it's been on Zoom. It's still Zoom. How would we, would we ask for a special meeting? Or just like a community conversation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that at least in Marlboro, you can get yourself on the agenda.
Right, which I'm totally fine with. Yeah, we're always on the agenda. We give a month report and, you know, James is there and I did a little write-up. But the outreach to that, there's not a lot of, I mean, there's chairs of all the other boards on, but.
There were maybe ten.
Ten, yeah, yeah.
How about, how about to organize this? I don't know whether the communications, we want to get active as soon as possible. And you have subcommittees who are specialized in thinking about this. No, I don't think that you have to do it. But I think if this communication subcommittee comes up with a strategy of how we can engage people, because this process goes on, nobody's voting at a town meeting in a hurry. So if we make that a goal, that we decide on, we want to decide on a mechanism that's, that's coming from the school committee rather than from individuals, it would be you to maybe make a suggestion at our next meeting. And then if you have one, then we put it in motion after that. Does that seem like a way to go?
Yeah, except our next meeting is like four days before this.
No, but that's just one thing. I mean, there, that's. So then after that, the thousands of people who didn't go there or the people who went there and didn't say anything because they don't feel comfortable, they still need to be addressed. And we're promised by the planning board that something is going to happen. But I, I think if we feel like we want to be proactive for our own communities, there's nothing to prevent us. Bonnie, and then Nancy.
I want to go back to what you said because Jane, you're a step ahead of 95% of the communities in terms of thinking, you know, what's our educational planning? What are we doing? I think for, based, and I'll give you, based on two different incidents.
Yeah.
One, I was at the boys' baseball game under DuBrienne's no-hitter pitch. And all these people who were there were asking me questions. These parents are obviously involved in, you know, because it's much more basic. It's back to what Dennis said. They don't know that they have a role to this. They don't understand what the whole process is, what it can mean. I then went to the spring concert. There's a little reception there. Whole population of people that I started to talk to had no, really no knowledge. Now, I think it goes to what Dennis is saying, that it's not only the formal gatherings of select boards, but what are we doing to put ourselves in situations where we can educate more and more of the population?
That's a great point.
And that's, that's where it is. And we were really lucky. I hate to put Jesse on the spot, but at Jesse's opening statements, the thing is talking to Chris, his opening statement at the awards assembly. his opening statement at the awards assembly, he really spoke to the nature of our district in a very careful way. He encouraged people to be involved and be aware. And I think maybe we have to look at, how do we engage, you know, our faculty and administration this? It's a, it's the ignorance that Jesse, I don't know if you want to say anything, but the lack of knowledge of, is phenomenal. I mean, we're twenty-four convincing in isolation.
All right, I I take your message, I'm also looking at time, so Nancy.
So what I'm wondering, Lucy and Jake are neither the representatives of either district. They might represent an idea, but they don't, they're not representing the district. And I'm wondering if in the group of Lucy and Jake going around to the different, to the different townships, different regions, should it, should, shouldn't members from the SBRC and BHRC shouldn't they be on that group as well?
I asked her that anytime she makes an appointment in any of our towns, that she is to inform the entire twenty over twenty-three, so we can attend.
But what I'm wondering is.
She does represent Alford, she's one of the three from Alford.
But she's not an elected member of the school.
But she's also not, it's not the same as having someone who is connected to, directly connected to to either district, so you don't know what, whether it's a parent, whether it's faculty or whether it's, you know, whether it's a faculty member with parent, with a parent.
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
Anyway, just something to consider as first.
Yeah, okay, so what I'm hearing, I'll be right with you, Jeff, I'm hearing that to Bonnie's point to encourage us when we're out in the public to talk, encourage conversations with people and let people know that we're there. And to you, I will, I think Bonnie and I will make sure that the board follows through with making sure that the school committee representatives to the towns know when these presentations are going to be made so that they can be widely published and publicized and we can be there to contribute to the conversation.
Did we get a substitute for Jeff?
No, we never did, Jeff, they wouldn't accept.
Hi, so I just wanted to clarify a point for Nancy, yeah. I I agree with what Nancy was saying, but the way I was hearing the point is the regional school district planning board is a committee, a planning board, that was appointed by moderators of the town. And by statute, each town had to have a representative from the school committee on that, the three that are there, it's town-driven. I think it's important to point out that these people are not elected officials. There's politics in the background of this and they're not held accountable to elections. So I mean, I just wanted to expand upon that point.
All right, well, I feel that we've had a few conversations on this and I'm gonna leave. Go, go ahead, Beth.
I I just wanted to say one thing and I think, and you've mentioned it, I think all the board members, the concerns about the timing. And I think it's, they want to have community conversations. That's a very hard time of year and I think you need to be mindful of when would be a good time for our families to be able to participate and engage because there's a whole lot of stuff going on and we can't split ourselves in ninety-five spots. So when would be a better time to to do that, you know? Because I I think this is going to be a missed opportunity in a lot of ways.
Maybe we need an outreach meeting.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I'm gonna go to to Art and then you.
I think the other problem, this is the worst timing possible for this, during COVID. Nobody were not really in public meetings. People are not going to follow this on the computer. And I think somehow we need to put together more public aware, a public meeting somehow to to draw people in because just, it's just not, Zoom is not working for the majority of people.
Nancy and then Bonnie and then we're gonna close town for another attempt.
Oh, yeah, it was proposed to them.
And we told them that it was terrible.
Both in the meeting and I wrote a separate letter to the chair and it was, you know, they did promise at one point, when Bonnie requested, that, you know, if the, if the outreach wasn't, if they didn't get the number of people they thought they should, then they would definitely consider a second one in the fall. But they know, they know, we've said many times on the poor timing.
Yeah, the reason is you have, the facilitator that Jake picked is only available then and we have to spend the money by the thirtieth of June. So this is typical of what we've been up against with grant funding, yeah.
I have advocated for other types of forums in the future, just going towards fall and people see that, we'll see how that comes together.
Yeah, yeah, and last, Bonnie?
I got totally slammed in a meeting where unfortunately, yeah, everybody had their other reasons that they couldn't be there, but it was, it was a real rough, you know, this is when we're doing it. And real, and I was totally, I went through every single bit of reasoning, everything that had brought up. We're also unfortunately, the elephant in the room is this time schedule that they're under for the first phase response of the new high school. And unfortunately, everything in terms of the merger and everything in terms of the grant for the high school have been totally conflated. And we're really beaten up like anything, you are completely right, Nancy, this is not the way to do it. But you've got, you know, we don't have the voices and maybe we have to figure out how we're going, you know, to do it. I mean, I find every time I find more and more people who don't know anything, this is the future of our communities.
You have to read the borrowers again and become totally like, take it out of the library and read the borrowers and then just learn how to politely undermine.
And what it means for economies, what is this going to?
Yeah, okay, so we all go to the beach, we all go to the supermarket, we all are out there. So I I love the schmooze idea to help.
Should we have?
Yeah.
Along this line, should we have, this is some different companies, should we have a list of what the talking points are so we can stay as neutral as possible on that talking points? Have that been put on page? And what we talked about.
I would put it in your subcommittee.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think the subcommittee, if you, I know everybody's busy and we had suggested that fall was a really fruitful time to start having good discussions and and we can do some informal stuff over the summer if we motivate ourselves. So I did want to mention that there is no funding coming from the state for this. Either we can't extend the funding, any unspent funds we have from this year are, have to go back to the state and there's no.
They were turned down.
They were turned down, they were also turned, there's no opportunity to apply for more money. And thirdly, Jake's team was denied funding as well. So there is going to be a sort of funding shortage until somebody figures out what to do about that. So that's, that, maybe that's the biggest news that we heard at our last meeting. So I'm glad we had this discussion and.
Jeff's hands up.
Oh, Jeff?
I have a question, um, I was familiar that the state was not going to fund this anymore, but what grants did the Jake Everwine's group apply for that they didn't get? And was there reasons?
Well, it was a Burke K-12 grant that they were going to be able to use some of those funds for working with us, I don't know any more of the specifics, but.
It's the regionalization grant that the state had put five hundred thousand dollars aside for the last several years. And we had got some as the planning board and he had gotten some as what's now Burke 12. So that did not make it into this year's budget all the way through the whole process. So for the first time in a couple of years, there's no funding for regionalization efforts.
Okay, so it was not a grant was denied, it was just the grant wasn't available, got it? Okay, thank you.
Question.
Yeah.
Legally, we have to make some root cause in terms of the fact we're entitled to a school committee member on all, from all.
Yeah, I know.
And what have we been advised in terms of power attorney? Because we're hurt like anything in terms of that.
Well, unfortunately, what it means is that at some point in time, someone could point that out and everything that's been done over a period of years will be thrown out. You go back to ground zero. And that's been explained, that's been explained to Chuck Ketchum. That, look, Chuck, if you don't replace your person, you know, this is, and it's now, what? How many months since they've had someone?
Yeah.
Month.
So the answer to your question.
Six months.
Yeah, we we have not officially looked into that, but I I think we've had enough information to suggest that probably not. We don't have, we haven't invested money in our own lawyer.
Yeah, well, I don't want us to invest money.
Yeah, but we'll see how that goes. Now, I'm I'm really looking forward to the next, because it's my, my time. No, but but this time it's gonna be fun because I, I have to give a speech on on Saturday. So I'm serious, I need your attention. Yes. My first speech, I got in trouble because I talked about human rights and democracy. I'm not doing that again. This speech is going to be what you want to tell our students and their parents. So I have a list of the comments we're gonna say right now that you want me to make and I'm ready to go.
I'm sorry, this speech is for what?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right.
I need context.
If anybody has anything that you want to be the words of the school committee, I will be your voice because that's my job. So I'm ready and I know I just sprang this on you, but I did not want to break an open meeting while by sending out, please send me stuff, so I'm doing it now. And if you don't have an idea, you have twenty-four hours to get it to me. So because I have to be ready at ten in the morning, I'm sad.
I think you're.
Yeah.
The story by Winston Churchill's speech.
No, I have not.
Sort of thing, graduation thing, and he was there and he was drunk.
Shocking.
That's a pro tip.
Don't show up drunk.
Don't.
No, that's not my style.
He got up and started to the podium, leaned over and said, never give up, never give up, never give up. And he went and sat down.
All right, I'll say, never give up.
Winston Churchill.
No, no, I'm gonna say that's your idea, Jim.
Jim's checks.
I I mean, it is humorous, but it's very important to me that I I get out there what you want them to hear. And I'm sorry that I left it two days before, but this is the way life is right now. So Bonnie, you have something?
Yeah, make it very, very short.
Absolutely.
You know, it's not at all about us.
No.
And I, my advice would be, and this is from somebody who's very verbose, just congratulate them on making it to this point and especially given what they had to do to get through these past couple of years with COVID and how many accomplishments they have made and our pride in that.
Okay.
Jeff's hands up.
I'm, I'm.
She's writing, sorry.
I am not gonna say who said what.
No, absolutely don't.
Okay, Jeff?
Um, well, good luck. I wish I could be there, but I I have a prior commitment. I I was gonna say, actually, if you were gonna draw upon, you know, comments from the school committee, I think, like, if there's a lesson that you can draw from our participation is that, you know, school and like, you know, grade school through high school, it's like a time to explore and feel who you are. And as school committee members, you know, we're volunteering our time. A lot of us don't, didn't know what we were getting ourselves into or it was new. For some other people, it was not new and there was experience, but it's just like, I think there's something, I don't know the exact words, but to just keep on trying and experimenting with things and being engaged with your community is important. And if there's anything, you know, that I think any of us who are on the school committee or who've been on the school committee before us, this is an expression of love for our community. And I don't know, it just, if there's any parallel, just be engaged and to that pay it forward when they're at a time when they can.
And do not be stupid about it. They had wonderful experiences, they pulled together this community. These teachers and these kids have done wonderful things and they should that, they should be proud.
I think part of the becoming citizens of the world is how you confront fear. And instead of like retracting or reacting, really like just saying, okay, this brings up fear for me, but I'm okay with that, I'm gonna move forward. I don't know if I'm gonna make that sound flowery, but.
I think that's a great idea because coming from this little community, going out to the students and the, we'll need in the everything, don't be afraid.
Right.
You've been a foot.
Or if you're afraid, that's okay, but just be okay with it and keep going.
Yes. Coming back in, I don't know how you put this, but coming back to Mount Everett after what Brad graduated in two thousand nine, Tanner went to elect in twenty-ten. Coming back to the community, I think the thing that's most powerful about Southern Berkshire, but particularly about Mount Everett, is the degree to which it is a community. And I will try to come back in, wouldn't know, I've been gone that long. Except for how much older we all look at a person. But that sense of community is pretty strong and I will say that my kids carry that concept of the sense of community. I might not always agree with them, they're very, for some shit that comes to the express. But that sense of community, that's a community.
Yeah, I actually was gonna say that too because my son and his friends that he made here are still completely glued together.
Yeah, even when they're all so countries apart.
And everybody from every walk of life who's accepted, I think that's the best lesson we learned here. And the SBRC care is not platitudine.
Jeff, is your hand up again or is that old?
Yeah, I had a thought about citizens.
I'm getting some, I'm wondering.
I did, but the thought like.
Wait a second, Art and Danil haven't spoken yet.
Oh, sorry.
I think that's the greatest thing about this school district, that everybody, any walk of life, any person is accepted here unconditionally. And I think that's the biggest attribute of this school.
Okay, I'm not quoting that, but.
So this is not the bulk of what I want to say, but I do want to say I've been super impressed with the students that have committed and spoken. You know, one kid, you know, interviews, I remember it was probably when my, my first or second year, they was a senior and he was speaking about college and he was speaking about how he was, I think, like captain of the baseball team, but he was in the play and he was also playing an instrument and and he wasn't an outlier. Everyone was like that in the school and I I was super impressed. But what I say sometimes is, you've mentioned community, so I won't go through that, but, you know. But what I say sometimes is, we've mentioned community, so I won't go through that, but, you know, tell them that they, you know, if they're, they're not happy for something in life, if they don't like what's going on, change it, because they can, and try to be the solution, rather than, you know, complaining about the problem. So I tell my kids, find a solution. And I also say, don't say this, but our world is kind of, it's a little messed up right now. They change it, they can change it. I'm like, you can judge it to them, no pressure, but they can change it, that, you know, they have the power. They've gone through COVID and all of this stuff, and they have the power and strength that they probably don't know they have.
Yeah.
And they can, they can change what they don't like, and start with small community and go from there, but, yeah.
I love that idea of them doing change agents, I think that's a great thing.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I think I'm gonna say because they were so cared about here, they unders, had opportunities to prove for themselves that they could do, that they all they need to do is take that out into the world and keep doing. I think that hopefully that stays with them, and last but not least, Mr. Jeff, and then we're on to the next item.
I, I think advice that I got a little bit later in life, I wish I got as a graduating senior, was also, you know, in, in the spirit of trying new things and meeting new people with different ideas and different ways of doing it, I think it's helpful to understand, be re, as somebody leaving high school, that whoever you're meeting outside of your world now are people, right? And it's possible to build relationships with people, even if it seems scary and unknown and whatnot for that. And I just, I feel like it was kind of like that same vein of, you know, global citizen, change agents. And if we look at our time together, when a lot of us came on the school committee, it seemed to go, it was gonna be very acrimonious. And I think just by treating each other with humanity, I'm blown away by the collegiality, even though we have different ideas about how some things should run on our district, the collegiality that we have exemplified even as a school committee. So thanks for giving me a chance to add that.
Okay, and thank you very much for devoting some of your meeting time to this, because maybe we can start a tradition that every year the chair gets input from the committee, and then we get a, a real speech. Only took me four years to figure that. All right, so now we have Dr. Beth Reguilon, who's going to tell us, update us. She's just been such a slouch the last few weeks, and she hasn't produced a piece of paper. She's just been busy morning till night, weekends included.
I have, but it's been really exciting work. So in the back of your packet is what was put together by our communications team as one way to advertise our very exciting early college visioning event. And that's part of the next step of our early college designation program. So we've been working with the coaches that we've received from the state. We had professional development recently where some of the administration, Julie, Jesse, and I, and our teachers who are becoming early college certified, went over to Bard, we had a tour, we had, they were paired up, and they're starting to think about the courses that they're going to develop in the future. So that was a really exciting experience. So now we need to think about how we're going to shape, and, and I think this is a little wider than early college, but it's through the lens of our early college about what the vision is, what skills do we want our students to have after they come through that program? But that's gonna articulate, you know, that's gonna align all the work that we do all the way down to pre-K. So I, I hope that we're gonna blast this out everywhere. I, I don't want to limit the number of people, but I really hope, I know it's a tough time of year. It's also something that we need to get done now, so that when we move forward in the fall, we can look to this vision, kind of like we did when I started in the district with our, with our visioning. So if people could participate, if you can talk to other people in the community who you think would really be interested in this work that we're doing, that would be great. We can get you copies of this flyer, like I said, we're gonna put it out on the website, we're gonna blast it to families. But it's, it's an hour and a half, and we hope to come out with a pretty good vision for, you know, how best to, to educate kids and what skills they're going to have when they're done with these programs. So I think it's a really exciting opportunity, and I hope people will, will participate. So it is June 16th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, and you're gonna meet the, one of our coaches who's facilitator, who has done, I started at least five early college programs across the country, and has some really exciting ideas, and.
It sounds like it's in person.
I, it is in person.
Yeah, it's the.
It is in person.
So is it the tap back?
It's gonna be wherever we, depending on how many people we're gonna get, so, yes, we probably will be more spread out, but.
Sign up for it.
I didn't do that, but I think it would be good for people to let us know if you're coming. So that would be, they can, they can contact me if they're coming, that would be great. We didn't put that on here, but this is just our first shot, and we, we can add that tomorrow before we send it out, but.
Yeah, I would make it big, the in-person.
How are you distributing this? Are you just doing this to everybody? And address?
Yeah. Yeah, and, but we're also going to, yeah, I'm going to reach out to people that we were working with specifically on the internship program, the businesses, you know, because a lot of those people. But I think word of mouth from, from you guys as well in the community with people you might know and say, hey, what do you think about this? We've had a lot of people say, you know, I'm having trouble finding people to work in my business. So, you know, let's talk about what skill would you like to see our kids come ready with? So it would be great, it would be great if we could get a variety of people.
So you'll have an updated one that you can share with us that we can put on Facebook and Instagram?
Well, our communications team will do that for us, right? They're gonna post it on, but you can also share from.
Right, as an individual.
Yes. And, well, that's the other thing, if you are a paper person, we can give you copies if you want to put it in your town hall or your library, wherever.
Yeah, definitely.
But it really has to be kind of an in-person thing, because it, there's some small group work that will be shared out, so this is really the only way to generate that. So we'll try to make it, you know, where we can spread out as best as we can, but I think, I think it'll be a really nice opportunity for people to be a part of.
And go outside the district, so we can take it up when we go up to businesses in Pittsfield and things like that?
Yeah, you can do whatever you would like with that. So I will be happy to, we'll have them just add where to sign or tell us that they're coming, and, and then we'll get them out to everybody. Okay? So also, I just wanted to share that prior to our next school committee meeting on the 23rd, we're gonna have an executive session for our annual safety team. We haven't done it because of COVID over the last couple of years, but we want to bring in our community partners. We do do it in executive session, so that we don't give away our trade secrets, but we do talk about issues of safety, safety and security in the district and the things that we're doing. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up, because that's a really important meaning to be, to be there for. Also, I know that there is an article, I, I did send some information to Heather Bella, who is doing a, an article of the entire about safety and security in the county. So every superintendent has sent in information about what they're doing, so I did that as well.
And date for the executive session?
Well, we're on 6/23, so, yeah, so it'll be five o'clock prior to this, the meeting, that's already scheduled. And then I just wanted to share as a part of our action step on our, around professional culture, which is part of one of our objectives on our strategy for district improvement. The administrative team has been taking, it's really more than a class, it's almost like a workshop on building and sustaining a community of care that was offered through a state grant. And we had the opportunity to self-assess areas of culture and things that we want to improve on. And then we pick one particular area, and we are getting coaching support, and we're having a goal that we're going to implement into our action steps for next year's strategy for district improvement. So that's been a really exciting opportunity, and, and I'll let people, when we get a little more detail, let everybody else share, you know, some of the data, but I just wanted to let people know that's one of the things that we're doing. As we talked about, and Mr. Thompson's here, which is very exciting, but he's gonna talk about our, our application process for the Innovation Pathway Designation. So Mr. Thompson, would you like to come up to the hot seat? Okay, wait.
Okay, so just to keep you up to date on what's going on in this capacity, the Innovation Pathway programs, it's kind of gonna run parallels of the early college stuff. So Innovation Pathways, if you're not familiar with them, so on the DESI site, you'd see like stuff, stuff early college, stuff for innovation pathways and other things. So Innovation Pathway basically is, there's five areas of need sort of in, in the country, the state. So we're gonna focus, take the technology pathway that we offer now and focus on manufacturing and information technology. So, you know, there's an application process that's beginning now, I said on the webinar today. So there's some, some, you know, duck shift to get in the road and that kind of stuff to be designated as Innovation Pathways. It's sort of, you know, we're sort of already doing a lot of this, but we can get designated to say, hey, this is happening here, and it can give us some opportunities, that's grant money, and possibly sort of focus kids a bit more on some advanced work that, that can, that can happen in the careers or do enrollment with college. So basically, on the manufacturing side of things, we're gonna apply based on our robotics classes, some of the stuff we're doing with rocketry and marine drones, aerial drones, those types of things, and 3D printing. So basically what they want is they want two credits of sort of your standard high school classes, and then two credits of advanced coursework, either AP or college, things of that nature. And on the information technology side, we're gonna coordinate with our, we're a newly designated Cisco Networking Academy location. So the only high schools in British County doing that are Ticonic and McCann. So we'll be in another one now. BCC is also a Cisco Networking Academy location, so I'm talking to BCC next week about how kids might take some of the Essentials coursework, Essentials is what they call their opening package, their intro package, take the Essentials coursework here, and then be able to possibly dual enroll with BCC in their networking or cybersecurity programs their senior year. Manufacturing might be more towards 3D design, the BCC also has some 3D design stuff. So there may be some stuff that we can do with the community college there. And we're also coordinating with, in this process, the Pittsfield office, the Berkshire office for Mass Hire is also on board to help us in any ways that they can in terms of getting our kids connected to careers and local businesses doing some of the same, same work. So it's a long process, the part A application is happening now, then there's a part B in the fall, and then you probably wouldn't get actual notification till a year from now, so it's more targeting the 23, 24 school year, I guess. But we're, we're in the works, going, going towards that, in that direction.
Okay, number of questions. One, do you have any of this written down, some thinking of certain, would it be appropriate if I wanted to approach business people that I know to attend this program on the 16th? Will you be taking part in that?
Yes, yes, we, I mean, it's, it's a bit sidebar to the early college, but in this sort of two different forks in this educational path.
But you're part of it, okay. So anything that you have in terms of written, you know, just little blurbs. Two, to whom are you applying, do I miss it, and how much money?
Well, there's, there's two parts to the process. There's applying just to the Department of Ed first, to DESI saying, we're doing this, and we have these partners. We have college partners, career partners, and they go, okay, great, you're designated as an Innovation Pathway program. Then they'll sort of turn you on to applications for grant funding. So in the initial application process, at least, my understanding from the webinar today is, it's not like they're gonna just hand you a, a check when you get designated to Innovation Pathway program, there's sort of two, two parts to it. There's the designation, and then there's, there's a financial piece to it. So what that might look like, I don't exactly know just yet, but there's supposed to be financial support for these.
And do you have any sense at all if, that we have a good chance at this?
Um, I think, I think we do, I just, I know that at least in talking to Mass Hire, you know, that particularly, you know, manufacturing and IT were, you know, hurting for those areas in Berkshire County. So I think that they would probably look favorably on that application.
And as of now, we are the only Cisco Academy
In South County.
South and middle county.
Ticonic is one, McCann is one, I think Cusick Valley, actually, I think is one as well.
Okay, so.
There's a few high schools doing it, but.
We should make people aware of that, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, so with, with the Cisco stuff, I mean, this is, you know, industry level, you know, content and coursework. You know, kids can work towards certifications, they're, they're gonna be challenging, but, you know, there's, there's courses in programming, there's courses in networking, cybersecurity, they can work towards industry standard certifications. If they so choose to take it to that level.
Well, you're always so modest about everything, but when I heard Jeff talking about how one of his daughters has totally turned on to robotics, we're, we're having a mindset that's fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been going quite a while.
A long time.
Yeah.
Yeah. 14, 14 years.
I just have, I wanna have an aside, when you or Jesse, or any of the graduates of Mount Everett are doing these generous, wonderful things for our students, I, I say this, that's how we can be a place that cares, because we have people who are sort of on the cellular level connected with our kids and our community. So I feel really lucky that you, that's stayed here, and I'm sure a lot of people would love to have you at their school, but grateful that you're here.
Well, thank you, it's good to be here.
Good.
All right, that was very fun.
I just have one more thing, tomorrow morning is the senior walk around 8:15. So hopefully, it's, it's really quite moving to see the older kids walk through all the little kids, you know. So it's kind of a, a fun moment, so I just wanted to share that, that's happening tomorrow morning at 8:15. Okay, I'm done.
All right, yeah.
I'm meeting for the 23rd.
Yes.
Is it possible to move that to 4:30 instead of 5:00, because I don't think an hour is long enough for that.
Um, I just, what we probably will have to do is, is move our meeting back to 6:30, probably, because I don't think, I think you have to be mindful of people's availability.
Wait, the 23rd, which one is that?
Our, our school committee meeting on, on June 23rd, so I think. So if we want to do, if we want to do an hour and a half, I think we would start, still start at 5:00, just to be mindful of, of everybody else's schedule, and then we might have to start our school committee meeting a little later. If we need more time.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, that's right.
An hour's enough.
Nice.
You know.
Thank you so much.
We will note that.
Yes, thanks for the input, Arst. So item 10, frequent instruction of professional development, comments?
Yes, I'm sorry, I did not type anything up for you, but doesn't mean I don't have anything to say. So we are just starting our search for English language arts curriculum for the elementary school. We are in the baby steps. I just sent out an email to all the elementary staff, asking for anybody who's interested in the initial stages, which will be done over the summer. So we will start with looking at all or any programs that are highly rated by a nonprofit organization called Ed Reports, which also, the state has their own evaluation program called Curit, and generally, they only approve things that have been approved by Ed Reports first. But because it's a smaller group, they don't get through as many things as quickly as Ed Reports does. So we'll start with looking at that, we will also look at, the state has what they call a hot sheet, where you can look and see what every district in the rest of the state. Where you can look and see what every district in the rest of the state is using. Just from my experience networking with other curriculum directors, we're all in the same boat of looking for new curriculum. Everything that everybody has is dated and not considered high quality anymore. So the good news is, a lot of the people that I know are actually trying new things this year. So we'll get input from them, because our goal is to, this summer, whoever is willing to give their time, take. I think it's going to end up, from my first glance, being approximately eight or nine programs. That we'll look through and tease out and decide on three or four of them to bring to the entire staff. And those three or four will be ones where we'll have them come in and present, we'll get the materials, teachers will be able to try things out. That'll be a whole school year long process going through that. Before then, the staff as a whole will fill out surveys and rubrics to decide which program we're going to use. So just at the beginning stage.
Yep, do you, you have teachers, elementary teachers already selected to be on the team?
They have all been invited. And so I so far have five people that have responded, but I expect that I'll get some more.
Thank you.
Is there? I'm just curious why you're looking into your curriculum?
Well, so. Our ELA curriculum, I believe, was purchased well over 10 years ago, so it's very out of date. We have, in the meantime, been purchasing supplementary components to support us. Many of which we will be keeping, so for example, foundational skills, which is very important and is very much a hot topic with the science of reading currently. We have foundations and we have Hagerty. And we've been using foundations for a few years, we just started Hagerty this year and the data is very positive. So we're going to keep those two programs. So whatever we buy is going to be in addition, it's going to be more for the comprehension, the writing, vocabulary. Because we're already seeing really good success, what we have for the foundational skills.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I have more. That was just, that was. Well, I was waiting to see if anybody else had a question. So the, the next thing I was just going to share, and Beth spoke about this a little bit, the last one saying it was coming up. Last Thursday, we attended the Berkshire County Education Recognition Ceremony at MCLA. Where we were very honored to be able to recognize teachers from different categories. So from the elementary category, we recognized Ellen Wallace. From the secondary category, we recognized Kevin Ogumah. For specialist, Josh King. For nurse, Tricia Zucco. For paraprofessional, DeeDee Storty. And when it came to administration, Dr. Regifuto decided that she could not choose one person, so she recognized our entire admin team. So other districts like picked a principal and she was like, yep, nope, everybody. So it was, it was a nice little celebration, they did a nice job, there was a wonderful speaker and it was just, it was nice to get together in person and do that. So my last thing is, our last Educating Our Eagles is going to be published, I believe, in a week. It's going to look a little different this time, make sure you look at it, it's called A Look Back at the Year. So it's going to include photos of all the kids in all manner of different situations. There's quotes from staff members, there's quotes from kids, it's really cute. And then one page that I really, really like is it highlights all the things that our staff do to further their education. Or things that they do during the summer, such as intensive summer institutes that they apply and get grants to go to. So it's a nice thing for you all to look at and see, and it will be pushed out on our. What, what is it?
On the app, on the webpage?
Yeah, well, what is, that's not the word I was looking for, but anyway, it will go out through all of that. But if you don't see it there on our webpage under curriculum, you can read all of our past ones as well as whatever is new.
They are really fun.
They are really fun, she has done such a great job with them. And our next meeting. Oh, Carrie Giordano, I'm sorry, I thought I recognized her like every time I talk about it. She is, Carrie is the best, she does all the photography, she edits all the teacher submissions. She goes in and makes it look beautiful and professional and then I say, yay! Set it up.
Yeah, great.
Can you put this, his up with his email?
Sure, absolutely.
That's a great idea.
And Carrie's been here a long time.
Yes.
Good example of using the best that teachers have to offer.
And the last meeting of the year, I will be bringing to you our student data. Jeff, student data, twenty third.
All right, and I see this, now, now can I go ahead?
Absolutely.
All right, so I see Sandy.
No, she's not here tonight.
Yes.
And, and we will just hear from her next time.
She has submitted. She did put something in here, knowing that she wasn't going to be able to make it tonight, so.
Yeah, right. Okay. Now we are going on to our new business, so we have. Handle the PK placement, now we have to pick some dates for our summer meetings. And I see that there's an or and not an and between these meetings, so.
Well, that's your choice.
I know, that's what I'm bringing up, because. Much as we may like to not have to come to meetings, it is an opportunity for us to have special meetings or to. Get ahead on some of the things that we'd like to do, so. I like, I, I don't know whether you have your calendars. I'm, I'm going to propose that we go for the July seventh and August eleventh as, as the dates. With those other dates in case we want to add them. I don't know if anybody has their calendar or figured out.
I'm unavailable the, the seventh.
I don't, I don't think, I'm not going to be available the seventh, like I'm not yet.
You can't do that either.
The seventh, no.
Okay.
I think it'd be difficult, I'm just going to be traveling, so I don't want to guarantee that.
That, I mean, we are, it's relevant to our. Superintendent Evaluation Process, because we hope to complete it by the deadline of July one. But if, for some reason we didn't, we'd need as soon as possible to get it done. So we could complete it with two people absent, because we would certainly have enough people, but it's desirable. I, I hope the twenty third, we can get it done and then we can go to the twenty first as the alternative date.
Are you saying the deadline is August one or you said July?
July one, July one. It's supposed to be, we should have it done on its way to the state.
On July one and you were proposing a meeting for July seventh, right?
No, I was proposing, we get it done on the twenty third, but if some disaster occurs that we can't. I want a backup, so we're not waiting too long, I mean, we can always meet again the next week in July, in June. So. Let's just be diligent and not need to.
Yeah, let's.
So.
I thought the twenty third is the last day of school for New Marlboro, right?
Last day for everybody.
Everybody.
Except kindergarten. Correct, they end on Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, it's kindergarten that has.
All right, so.
Full day on the twenty seventh.
Twenty sixth.
Twenty third is a half day. Twenty third is a half day.
So should, I, I think maybe we'll have a motion to lock in two dates, if that makes sense. And it seems like the preferred ones are July twenty one. And for July. And for August, is there a preference between the eleventh or the twenty fifth?
Wait, sorry. I thought we were talking about June and now you just said the twenty first of July.
I did.
I'm confused.
Setting our summer meetings right now.
Yeah, and we already have one on the books for the twenty third.
The twenty third is having a.
And that's when we want to get the executive evaluation done by the twenty third.
So our next meeting is set for the twenty third of June, in case we got confusing when it was, Nancy?
Very soon, around the end of August or September, so I won't be here, potentially won't be here.
Yeah, well, we can go for the eleventh. Want to do that?
Yeah.
So we're going to go for July twenty one. And August eleventh, let's just make that a motion so it's official. Anybody want to make a motion?
We moved that, we plan our summer, schedule our summer meetings for. July first, August eleventh.
This is second?
What was that second date? Thank you.
All right, so roll call vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Kara? Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Danelle?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Nancy? Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jane, yes, okay, we got our meetings. All right, now we have the HVAC project bid award to work with now.
And Jeremy is on here, do you want to?
Yep.
Thank you, Jeremy, for waiting all this time.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So we recently went out for rebid for HVAC replacements, we had to dial the scope back a little bit. So we're working with the reduced scope in the bids and our target was the classroom. Individual classroom unit ventilators, which are just pretty much the HVAC unit for the classroom. And we had two bidders that came in. Adams Plumbing and Heating came in at one million four hundred and sixty eight thousand. The second lowest bidder was EF Corcoran. And their bid came in at one million five hundred and forty five thousand. My recommendation for award would be Adams Plumbing and Heating. Due to the fact that their reference, references all came back positive and they are the lowest and most responsible bidder.
Art, do you want to comment on the meeting?
Yeah, we had a building and grounds meeting, Jeremy explained all this to us. The Building and Grounds Committee went along with Jeremy's recommendations for Adams Heating.
Funded, local, and all?
They're out of, they're out of Adams.
Oh, yes.
Motion to recommend that we pass this?
Yes.
Yes.
So. We need to. Do you want to put that motion out for us all to vote on and then we can have further discussion?
Sure, I make a motion to approve Adams Heating and Plumbing for the HVAC system for the current year.
Second.
Jeremy, when are they going to start? If we approve the.
Lead time on these, on these unit ventilators is sixteen to eighteen weeks. So they want to, I mean, at the max, it looks like they're not even going to be arriving until eighteen weeks from the award.
The winter.
Be, be August, late, late August.
And how long will the whole project take?
We're anticipating about three months, but it's not the entire building that's going to be shut down, it's going to be just the classroom at a time.
So we would just be able to shift students?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeremy? Jeff?
Jeremy, was the impetus to make it a smaller bid specifically about the rolling out and doing the fixing or was there other reasons?
We, we had, we had about 1.5 million to work with.
Okay.
And the original bids came in at, the lowest was 2.7. For the.
Was that mostly attributed to just inflation of cost, cost of materials and everything?
Yeah, yeah, from, from the original study, yes, so was the unit ventilators themselves more than doubled. From when we had the study done in twenty twenty one. Early twenty twenty one.
How much longer can we go with the rest of the building not being?
So the, the items, the big items we took off for the gyms, the theaters and the rooftop, rooftop units, exhaust fans. And I'm looking into other ways of possibly financing this, these equipment pieces. And then we're still, we're still waiting on when the governor's going to release this. Hundred million dollar grant that he's released with the COVID funds back in December and nothing's been announced yet about that.
How much time do we have till those other units need to be replaced?
They're, they're performing, I mean, the, the only issues that I see at the moment are the. Exhaust fans that, on the roof, the exhaust fans themselves, hope, you know, balance the building and. Those, those should be able to hang on for a couple more years, as long as we, you know, maintain them, change out the belts and everything. And then we've had to replace a few motors, like I think it was two years ago, we replaced some of the motors on the, the fans in the roof. Uh, but we should be able to last another year or two before they, it's like, they're going to, the fans themselves are going to start failing.
Thank you. Yep.
Does this in any way tie in with our air conditioners, you know, our splits and stuff? Or that's the regular maintenance of those?
This would only be replacing like condensing units directly related to. Unit ventilators that are in classrooms, there's a few classrooms that do have a condensing unit attached to it. But as far as like the mini splits on the second floor, that's, it's just regular maintenance.
Thank you.
All right, should we take a vote? All right, Kara?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Danelle?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jane? Yes, all right, thank you for your work on this, Jeremy and the subcommittee, and we look forward to the work. Getting underway whenever it's possible to start. And now we are going to item E, Superintendent Evaluation and Contract. I think I'll just start out by reporting that at our last meeting. We had an executive session to discuss whether or not the school committee would like to go into negotiations. So with Dr. Regifuto about extending her contract and by unanimous vote. The, the committee. Agreed to do so and she said that she was willing to enter that process. So we haven't set dates for that, but we want to say that in public that. We felt that her leadership was key to getting us through the next phase of the early college and. What the future of the district will be like and it's, she's done an amazing job and this is no time. If she's willing to stay with us, we're, we're, we are very grateful. So we haven't talked any money yet. That's coming up, so then I'm going to turn it over to. Jim DePisa, who has agreed to chair the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, to tell you what are. What we hope you'll think is a good plan for us to follow.
So there's a process to these, it's found out, okay. And the process is that we all get a survey to complete. Those will be out by June eighth. And we need you to complete them by June seventeenth. Back to me.
Is that an online?
Yeah.
Co-let that information, we'll meet with subcommittee, we'll meet with Beth on the 22nd of June. Final evaluation will then will be a meeting on the 23rd. Which has to be done in open session. For those of you, including me, who might need some help with that, doing this for the first time or whatever, we'll try to set up a Zoom or personal one-on-one kind of thing to go over or group to go over, figure that.
Did you set a time on the 22nd on meeting?
We have a timer, it's 22nd.
No, we're.
Do that.
We're open to your availability.
Yeah, I am available after, depending, well, I assume it's in person, I could be available by 3:45 or in the morning.
Okay.
Doesn't matter, I mean, they just give you guys enough time to do a draft or something.
Okay, well.
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock. Yeah.
Jim, he could confirm that, I couldn't hear that. What was that time?
It's four o'clock on June 22 and then the 20?
That'll just be part of the meeting on the 23rd.
On the 23rd.
That's the regular school.
Right.
It's the regular school committee and we have, and we have to present, and we have to present that in an open.
Yeah, right. So one thing that I said that I would try to do is make you aware of all the documents that we've gotten through our meetings through the year that are evidence of accomplishments or how things have been dealt with. And in order to, with Beth being incredibly busy with early college and other things, that possibly people who had needed more documentation would talk to Jim, let Jim know and he'll sort of co-let what additional pieces of information you might want, yeah.
Just going back to the basics, going back to what MASC told us, and I know Beth keeps this. She's got very organized folders and binders. And the way we were advised initially with that, you know, is you coordinate with Lynette if you want to come in and view any of these documents.
Okay. Good point.
So anything that fits, and you've kept that up.
I have a lot of things, but there's a lot of documents. So, I mean, there's, and so, you know, maybe some things are posted online, I could just point you to those or, but whatever. I just need a sense of what you're specifically looking for and then we'll have that available.
Okay.
So you guys coordinate with, yeah, and then anybody who wants it to do it.
You can't believe it's already June and we're doing. Seems like it was March yesterday.
Yeah, time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah, it does. So now, I think we move on to subcommittee reports unless anybody has further.
I just, the state deadline is June 30th, so we have to.
Yeah.
Right, well, it's what Lynette explained, well, may she rest in peace, what Linda Higgins explained to me before. It's basically you put a letter in and you press a button.
We just have to figure out what button. Okay, so I'm going down, I'm not going to read all the subcommittees here. If anybody who had a subcommittee meeting wants to do a report, raise your hand. So Art?
Jeremy's, Jeremy's still here.
Yeah.
So in the building and grounds meeting, Jeremy brought forth a solar company that's proposing to put solar panels on the roof. And just, it'll cover quite a bit of the roof. But the gain out of all this is that um, they want to do this for 20 years. We're going to start the process, there's, it's a big, it's a long process to get started. But the great thing is that the school district will have virtually no electric bill or minimal electric bill. So this will go in coordination with our electric credits that we're already getting. This is the next part. So the school, in essence, will have no electric bill for the next 20 years. If we qualify, there's a qualifying part of all this and, but it looks like, and the solar panels, there's, the roof will be inspected by three different people, make sure everything is set, nothing attaches to the roof. The panels basically float on the same material that the roof is made out of, on pads. It was very interesting and the, his proposal was very good last night. He was thorough, we got a lot of questions. Jeremy, you have anything to comment?
You did a pretty good job describing pretty much what we, what we went over the other night. Just to reiterate, the roofs can be inspected by roofers, the maker of this roof material that's on the roof and third-party engineer to ensure that the roof is strong enough to hold the panels. The district will not own the panels, the panels will be owned by this company. And they do pretty much all the maintenance. If there's any maintenance that needs to be done with these panels, the company is the one to handle all of the financial cost behind this.
I see Jeff and then Bonnie?
Nancy was it?
Nancy too, okay.
Um, Jeremy and Art, thanks for sharing this. I think this is exciting in the sense that, A, it's financially responsible, B, it is an ecologically responsible, environmentally responsible thing. But I do have some concerns that I just want us to address and they don't have to be addressed now. Does any, do these, having these panels, if approved by these third parties that are evaluating the safety and whatnot for it, does it violate our warranty on the roof at all or any other warranties that we might have on the building? That's one question. Also, if there is, is there anything in the contract or the language that provides the school district recourse if the company is not properly maintaining the panels? Because what we don't want to be blindsided by is not getting the energy yields that we need out of them and us having, being faced with a big bill that we weren't. So I guess those are my two big questions.
So, okay, so to address the bill issue, we'd be purchasing power from this company that the panels produce. So it kind of incentivizes them to make sure that they're producing the maximum amount of power that they can produce. And the first question was, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Right, the warranty.
So that's, that's why we get, we get the roofers and the roof company to come out and look at the roof before and after they install the solar panels to keep the warranty on the roof. Warranty is good for another 15 years here.
Now, let me see, I have.
Nancy was ahead of me.
Good. Nancy, then Bonnie, then Dennis.
So it sounds to me like this is pretty standard, so solar panel approach, you know, big people in earth companies in essence, renting, leasing, however you want to put it. My question is, who is the company?
Sorry, say who's bluffing?
Company.
I couldn't hear it again.
Name of the company, Jeremy?
The name of the company, select. Select Energy.
Thank you.
All right, so then.
And where they based at?
They're based out of Massachusetts, they're one of the biggest commercial rooftop installers for solar panels.
All right. Bonnie, you mentioned.
Okay, Nancy asked one of my questions. There is no upfront cost for us, nothing at all? And you've checked the company's reputation?
Yes.
They did all of Harvard's solar panels.
Well, in that case, you'll get smart solar.
And now it's because of their historic value.
Okay.
And Dennis?
Jeremy, I just wanted to find out, have they, what's, what are they, what's their thinking, this company, in terms of, that these are going to be on a pretty high rooftop? And solar panels do tend to blow away. All you have to do is go down County Road. Oh yeah, go down County Road, they've lost probably about maybe 10% of their panels on that big, that big one on County Road. And, you know, and that's at ground level, so.
So, I can't really speak for the company themselves. They're, the weight of these panels, the way that the racks that they sit on are engineered, they're engineered for these like winds that go up to 90 miles an hour. They have, this company works a lot out in the Cape Cod and the, in on the coast areas and buildings, the flat roofs. And they have, you know, decent reputation out there with this product lasting.
They're going to be seated on the roof, there's not going to be any integration into the roof, right?
Correct. Engineered system.
Yep.
But I think that's what they talked about as opposed to the panels that are on and around, right? It's because of the way that they're only laying on the flat roof, they don't do it on, you know.
They're basically flat, sitting on pads, and then they counterbalance in between the panels. They have weight to hold these things in place.
Is there any, do we need to vote or?
Yes.
Tonight or they're coming with a proposal?
No.
Yeah, I saw that, so they're ready for us to give them the go ahead.
We're, we're just, the building and grounds, you mean, has approved this. But just to start the beginning phase of qualifying with the dollar amount of the electricity there in, whether we call it the roof qualified, we just need a sign off to start the process. Then if everything goes ahead, hit big, they will come back, give us a formal presentation and then we'll go ahead.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to, and Jeff, I see your hands up, but I'm going to entertain the motion anyway and you can do some. Well, we can have more discussion, but who would like to make the motion?
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of buildings and grounds to start the process for installation of solar panels.
Second.
I'm going to let Dennis have the second there. Okay. You have more discussion, Jeffrey? All right, I'm giving you two minutes.
Thank you. It's a quick question. How long are these panels, what's the estimated life on them? And then at the end of life, do we have the ability to release or whatever it is that we're doing? Or when does the agreement dry up?
20 years.
20 years, yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
20 years.
It's a 20-year project, so at that point, if we want to renew with them, we can. Or we could do a different company or go back to whatever is the newest technology, is that correct? There's no obligation after 20 years to have the panels on our roof?
That's correct.
Probably also going to need a roof, you know, because it's aligning at that same time. No, it was really, he said it is a really good time because of where we are in the roofing, you know, with the life of that. So you would probably take the panels off and then re-roof and then decide what you want to do.
I mean, this is just an approval to start moving ahead.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah.
All these backout times and issues of the end.
Yes, we just, we're just showing that we're, we want to go the first step to analyze.
Yeah, that was my motion.
Yeah, okay.
The presentation is really comprehensive, it was like fascinating actually. So, I mean, I'd be happy to forward that to school committee members.
Oh, yeah.
It answers everything that.
Laura, thanks.
All right, so we ready to vote?
Yep.
All right, Kara?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jane, yes, okay.
Thank you.
Really cool, this is one, this thought was on our bucket list. I mean, it's just amazing how all these things are coming up. All right, so I think I have a future agenda item that I know of from Dennis about MASC and MASSS that I'm going to put on.
Can we just go back to the subcommittees really quick?
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah, I haven't given mine yet.
Oh, you didn't? Well, I just had a quick question. Since I have all of the community outreach people here, can like, does anyone have time on Tuesday or Thursday next week?
I don't know yet.
Okay. And if Tuesday does work, is it too late for, if I send it to her by tomorrow morning? That's 40 hours, right?
Yep.
Thursday safer?
Probably, just so that we all know that we can do it.
There's a full.
Tuesday works for me, so.
There's a full RSDPB meeting on Wednesday.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, and there's open house for us, so there's a lot of things happening.
Oh. Tuesday. Yeah, we can just make it happen on Tuesday.
Tuesday works for me, Thursday being prep for deposition, so.
Okay, so.
That's going to last.
Okay, we'll shoot for Tuesday, I'll send an email.
Okay.
Yeah, I can start right at five, but not before that.
As quickly as possible. Yeah. We, you need to get it as opposed.
So can you do it, I could do it at five on Tuesday.
Okay. Okay, very nice. I was thinking that since we're going into executive session, maybe Bonnie, that would be part of.
No, I need.
You have another thing?
Yeah. All right, I'll put this in at five o'clock. I just want to ask, Julie, you took minutes at a couple of our executive sessions on negotiations. And Jane, if you have your minutes together somewhere, we have, Lynette's been on me. We have to hold a meeting just to approve minutes.
Okay.
So I need, I want to get all of them so I could review them and then I could send them this package to everyone.
Anything I did, I sent to Jane.
Oh, you did?
Josh, yeah.
So you have the two meetings that Julie did.
Apparently I do.
If you don't find it, let me know.
Okay.
Well, I.
I can resend.
I'm not the best at the zillion emails that I have.
I can resend that to you, don't worry.
Well, you can send them directly to me.
I can send it to you.
Right, and I'll send you what I.
Okay, that's what I, and then I will send out a note to set a meeting, just for reviewing this.
Very good.
So, with the meeting, where would that meeting be? Where the?
Okay.
So it's going to be a Zoom?
All right, so item. Sorry to cut you off, are you ready to go get this executive session underway?
Yeah, she's putting in her meeting for Tuesday.
All right, so can I have a move to enter into executive session for some?
Motion to enter into executive session pursuant to discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the SB REA Unit A. As an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining decision as declared by the chair and the committee will return to open session. Roll call vote required.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, and so Kara?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Nancy?
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so.
So, hold, let me just say, I'm sending the members who are at home, I'm going to send you a link for executive session, right, because we're coming back into, we have to come into open session.
Yeah, so did you hear, we're going into an executive session, whatever we decide in the executive session, we're coming back out to say to the public and we'll be coming back to this Zoom address for that, is that what you're saying, Beth?
Yes, you have to come back into the regular session and we anticipate being about thirty minutes an executive session for those who need to come back on.
We are in open session now, I take a motion to I just say to vote on the.
Motion to approve the contract with the SB REA for units A and E, second.
Okay, so Bonnie?
Don't you want to ask for discussion?
No.
In that case, yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Nancy, yeah, I just forget. Jim's getting a little, Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. All right, unanimous?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I got it, I'm trying to take some minutes here because I don't think there are any. Okay.
I am recording it, but the minute takers might not have, might be earlier than they anticipated, so.
Okay, so Bonnie?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
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 Jeff?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Yes.
Jane, yes, okay, we're out of here at eight twenty five.